I'd like to call to order this meeting tonight of the Bristol, Virginia City Council for January 23rd, 2024. I would like to take a moment of silent prayer. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, Speaker Wilder of the United States of America and to the Republic which extends one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I know that you all probably seen in the news today that we've had a terrible fire and it's really sad to see our old school board building now gone. And it's really heartbreaking for those of us that's grew up in the city and has seen it for many, many years. And I didn't go to elementary school there. It was before my time, but I've talked to a lot of people today that even went to elementary school there and remembers their time there. But I think we all have memories of some kind, of some sort. I remember it was a school board building when I was in school here in the city schools and would go to there, go by there from time to time. So it's just really heartbreaking that it's happened. And I just, and our firefighters, that was the other thing. I wanted to say thank you to our Bristol, Virginia firefighters. They've been on the scene all day, still on the scene, working that site. And then also the Bristol, Tennessee Fire Department has joined them so, and helped with fight that fire today. So I'd like to say thank you to them. Additionally, I'd like to say thank you to all of our city workers with the recent snowstorm. I know they were working day and night before, during, and after, keeping our roadway safe and accessible. And I appreciate that, as well as all of our policemen and everyone else. So thank you to them. And then also to Neil, I'd like to thank you as our Public Information Officer. You did a great job staying, putting everything out on social media so we could keep the public that's on social media channels up to date with the closings and everything that we had going on, the difference of delays and the changes in schedules and what's happening. So thank you for staying on top of it. I know that's not an easy task either. So thank you. So I will open it up for council comments.
Just to echo exactly what you said about our, all the work that, one, that our Fire Department has done, and then also everyone, the EMS folks, the police officers, the Public Works folks that have been working just so hard through everything, especially with the weather, the snow, and then, and then the fire today. Just, just a thank you to all of them that have been really out working. You know, those are our positions in the city. Those folks are always working, always on call, always ready. And a lot of folks don't even really think about them until you need them. And, and they're always there. So, so our thanks to, to all those folks.
And also for the record, I'll also say that Vice Mayor Jake Holmes is joining this by phone. And Jake, would you like to add any comments?
Thank you, Mayor Nave. I just wanted to kind of reiterate what everybody else has said. Thank, thankful for the, the Fire Department, the firefighters this morning that worked so hard with the, the school fire there, the abandoned school fire. Thank you to the, the folks on the Tennessee side that came to help as well. That, that could have gotten a lot worse without their, their hard work there. And also, like everyone else has said, thank you to our Public Works folks, our, our city staff that helped us through the, the bad weather. I know my wife and I, we, we stayed home. We didn't have to get out in that weather, but our, our emergency services, everybody else had to get out, had to do their jobs. I appreciate the, the work that was done despite the weather. And then my apologies for not being there tonight. Work took me away, but I hope to be at the next meeting. So thank you all.
All right. Thank you. Good luck. Have a good seeing you next time. Any other council comments? All right. We'll move into City Manager's comments.
Yes, Council, I just want to reiterate what you all have stated in regards to our Public Works Department, our Fire Department, our Police Department. Over the past week, we've had extreme cold and a lot of snow. Our Public Works Department, they kept the streets clear. They were working all night long to keep the streets clear for everybody in the morning. They'd worked throughout the day as well. They did a terrific job. Thanks to the Fire Department, Police Department for this morning's fire. They did a terrific job of containing the situation, making sure no one got hurt while working on the fire. It's a, still a working scene and will probably be a working scene for the next day or two as we continue to sift through the rubble up there. I want to mention that the Bristol MLK Junior Celebration in March has been rescheduled. The event will now take place on Saturday, February the 3rd, and the timing for the event will remain the same as it was for Martin Luther King Day. Finally, we have several new businesses that have opened in Bristol in the last few weeks. We welcome them to Bristol and encourage everyone to support them by shopping local.
All right. We are looking for an adoption of the agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Councilman Osborne and a second by Councilman Farnum. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes. All right. Moving into the regular agenda, presentation by fiscal, fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget calendar. Staff report.
Council, tonight, we want to try to start setting the budget schedule as we move forward here in the spring. I have provided a schedule. Gene, do you have that? Here, the preliminary schedule for everyone to take a look at and to make note of certain dates. As we started to work on the budget back in December, that's when budget work papers were sent to department heads. Those were due back to finance by January the 19th. Outside, outside agency applications were due back by January 19th. Internal department management meetings will occur during the month of February, along with budget development during February and March. We will have our first workshop on March the 7th. I believe that's a Thursday night. So make sure that's okay with everybody's calendar. Next, on the following Tuesday, March 12th, we will have the Bristol, Virginia Public School presentation and the outside agency presentations that we have every year. And then that Thursday night on March 14th, we will have another budget workshop. And I plan on presenting the budget on March 28th. And that is due to the fact that we have to get the tax, tax rate set in time for that to be sent out. And I think it's going to have to be sent out a little bit earlier this year than what it normally has to be sent. So March 28th will be the budget presentation. The tax rate resolution would be set on April the 9th, which is the following Tuesday. Advertisement for the fiscal year 25 budget would occur on April the 13th. The public hearing appropriation ordinance would occur on April 23rd. The first reading of the budget ordinance, May 14th, and the second reading and the adoption of the budget ordinance on May 28th.
All right. Thank you. Council discussion.
I would like to think that this year's budget won't be as difficult as last year's, but I'm afraid that may not be the case. I appreciate that we are getting this early start on it, but it's, it's still a very tight schedule as it always is. And we'll have roughly two meetings if things happen to get delayed in order to still comply with code and get our budget done on time.
Yeah, I appreciate the, I appreciate this, appreciate us getting the schedule this early. It's, I know it's, it's an ambitious schedule to have all these things happening in March, you know, in early March. As Councilman Pollard said, it's probably not going to be an easy budget cycle, you know. I think I've been here, I think this is my sixth budget cycle, and they're never easy. And this one will be no different. You know, so I look forward to it. I look forward to hearing our outside agency presentations. I hope they understand the position that we are in when they come asking for money. While at the same time, you know, we understand that they do important work. So, you know, excited to hear from them, excited to hear from our school system, and excited to jump into it.
So just a side note, a couple of those workshops are on Thursday nights. Does that work for everyone's schedule? Because I'm good with that.
I have one meeting the night of one of those, but I'll just have to skip that meeting. It's not going to be my first one of the year, fortunately.
I think it sounds good. I think it's, there's some time built in if we have to make any changes or adjustments along the way. And so I think it's a good plan.
Any other comment? Jake or Vice Mayor Holmes, do you have any comments?
I'll, I'll jump in real quick. I appreciate having this, the schedule put together. This is very helpful going forward. I hope we can publicize this a little bit, get some citizen input at the public hearings, get a lot of, lot of good feedback on things. And I also want to thank our city staff for all the work they do throughout the years with the budget. I know we asked them to do a whole lot with very little, and they continue to do that and continue to do a good job. So I just appreciate city staff what they do. And thank you for giving me the chance to speak.
All right. Thank you. And I'll echo some of those comments that we do appreciate you getting this to us early. And thank you all for your hard work putting this together. I do think it's going to be a difficult budget season, but we've survived some other ones and we'll survive this year. We'll figure it out. So if, if we do have any changes, do we need to give them to you now? Or are we good with what, what's here?
I think we're good with what's here, but you know, if all of a sudden something pops up on all of y'all's calendars that you need to be somewhere on March 14th, you know, let me know as soon as you can so that we can make adjustments to that calendar as we move forward. I'd like to stay as close to the schedule as we possibly can. I know there may be times that we can't have a meeting for some reason or another, but if we can just stay on this schedule. I think it's worked well for us for the past, what, five budget seasons, we've been on the schedule to have everything done by the end of May. And, you know, it, it seems to work well that way. I think the only year that we weren't able to get it done by the end of May was COVID year, and we went into the first meeting in June, I believe.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda, supplemental appropriation of $585,275. Staff report.
Mayor and members of council, this item is a supplemental appropriation of $585,275, consisting of an item in the general fund for the Circuit Court Clerk, appropriate bond forfeiture funds received that are be, that are to be refunded to the bonding agent, $3,500. And then the school operating fund, the Bristol, Virginia Public Schools requests an additional appropriation of $581,775 for additional grant funding and insurance recoveries received. There are no additional local monies in the appropriation. That is $581,775, making the total supplemental appropriation request $585,275. And staff recommends that council approve the supplemental appropriation as listed. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve this supplemental appropriation.
I move to approve the supplemental appropriation as presented.
Second.
All right. We have, we have a motion by Councilman Pollard and a second by Councilman Osborne and the Vice Mayor. Council discussion.
So just for the record, I know you said it, Mr. Phillips, but just for everyone listening in the audience and at home, the $581,000 school appropriation is just a pass through because we've received the money and it goes to them because it's, it's grant money essentially.
There are no local monies in that appropriation.
Right.
All right. Any other discussions? All right. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes. All right. Next on the agenda, financial policies review and revisions. Staff report. Back to you, Cameron.
All right. Mayor and members of council, this is the city's financial policy update. Tonight, we will review the city's financial policies, which are to be presented to council before January 31st of each year. And then we will review Finance Committee recommended changes to other city finance policies. These policies have been reviewed by the Finance Committee and are presented with the committee's recommendation. The Finance Committee currently consists of Mayor Nave, Councilman Holmes, the City Manager, the Assistant City Manager, the CFO, the Treasurer, and the Commissioner of Revenue. The purpose of the city finance policies as a whole is to, first of all, maintain a finance manual that is available both in the Finance Department and on the website to the public. These policies guide the city in best financial practices. These policies are reviewed and discussed regularly at Finance Committee meetings and at council meetings. And maintaining and following written financial policies is how the city creates standardization and implements best practices. As mentioned earlier, these policies tonight come to council at the recommendation of the Finance Committee. The policy that we will discuss in depth this evening is the financial policies. Recommended changes to this policy are discussed on the next slide. The purpose of the financial policies is to first insulate the city from a fiscal crisis. It serves as the guide for decisions that have a significant fiscal impact. This policy promotes long-term financial stability. This policy directs attention to the total financial picture of the city. This policy establishes the guide to ensure sound financial management. Another purpose of this policy is to protect the city's credit rating. It lists the city's goal is to achieve a AAA credit rating, which is the highest credit rating for a local government. This will require significant and sustained fiscal discipline by the city, but the policy goal is AAA and is what we are striving for. The city's current underlying credit ratings are A2 for Moody's and A+ for Standard &amp; Poor's. This policy limits the maximum overall legal and moral obligation debt, and this policy will be reviewed and presented to council by Jan, January 31st of each year. The Finance Committee has two recommended changes to the financial policies. The first recommended change is to Section 5.01A Capital Improvement Program Components to change the total cost of capital items from $5,000 to $10,000 in order to remain consistent with the city's financial reporting policy. The second recommendation is to Section 7.04 Finance Committee to update Finance Committee members to include the Assistant City Manager. Any other recommendations to this policy were minor grammatical updates and do not change any substance of the policy. And also, I would like to note, there is one update to the redlined version that's in your agenda packet. Section 4.05 Budget Performance Monitoring has the word A-Fect removed and replaced with E-Fect. That was an error on my part, and the word A-Fect should remain in there. So next, we'll review the content within the major sections of the financial policies. The revenue sections of the financial policy, financial policies addresses revenue collections to monitor that all taxes are collected timely and accurately. It states that a reassessment for all real property will complete, will be completed every four years. Revenue forecasts will be realistic and attainable. Forecasts are to be conservative yet accurate. Restricted revenue shall only be used for the intended purpose. The city will limit the use of one-time revenues to one-time expenditures such as non-recurring items. Unless related to carryover funds, the use of unassigned fund balance should not be used to finance current operations without specific approval by council as a regular agenda item. The expenditures section of the policy states that one-time expenditure should be funded with an offsetting revenue item or from an adequately funded reserve. Ongoing expenditures will be monitored in comparison with budget appropriations, effectiveness of the services, and operational efficiency. The city will seek to optimize the efficiency and effectiveness of all services. Department heads will be responsible for managing expenditures within the operating budget. Next is the budget section of the financial policies. The city has a separate budget policy which details the specifics of the budget process. The budget section is included in the financial policies for completeness purposes and states the following. The city's budget will be balanced, and it is considered balanced when all payments for operations, debt service, and annual capital plan needs do not exceed budgeted revenues. Ongoing and stable revenues will be used to support ongoing operating costs. The use of one-time revenues and one-time expenditure savings or excess cash balances will be used for non-recurring expenditures. Monthly reports comparing actual revenues and expenditures to budgeted amounts will be prepared monthly and distributed to departments. Budget adjustments between line items may be authorized by the City Manager, and council must approve supplemental appropriations. The Capital Improvement Program section of the policy requires a five-year capital improvement plan. The Capital Improvement Program consists of two components. The capital plan, which lists the item the locality anticipates needing within the next five years, and the capital budget, which the City Manager presents to council for approval as an element of the annual budget adoption process. The debt section of the policy is the largest section of this policy and sets the guidelines for making financial decisions relating to debt. The city does not intend to issue tax anticipation notes, but this section allows that if the timing of revenues requires the issuance of these notes, the notes may be issued as outlined in the budget ordinance. There are two debt ratios listed in the policy. Even though state law allows the issuance of general obligation debt up to 10% of assessed value of real property, this policy restricts the city to 5% of assessed value of real property for general obligation debt. The second debt, debt, the second debt ratio in the policy is debt as a percentage of operating expenditures within each fund, and the ceiling is set in this policy at 8%. Compliance with these policies will be calculated each fiscal year and provided to council with the proposed budget. They will be available to the public in the budget document and are currently listed in the fiscal year 24 budget book on page 14. The long-term debt policy describes when the city may use debt and lists the various types of long-term debt instruments that the city may consider using depending on the circumstances. It also lists the criteria for evaluating funding for capital improvements. The policy specifically states that under no circumstance is it recommended to issue long-term debt obligations for private enterprise projects where business plans and market risk play a significant role in the economic outcome of the project. The policy maintains that the city is committed to full and complete financial disclosure in order to share clear, comprehensive, and accurate financial information. The last section of the policy is financial reporting. This section states that the city's financial statements will conform to generally accepted accounting principles as established by the Government Accounting Standards Board. The city will maintain an accounting system to allow for the accurate and timely preparation of financial statements. Audit results will be presented to City Council for acceptance. The Finance Committee will regularly review the financial activity of the city and may report to council any areas of significant concern. Monthly financial statements will be distributed to council and quarterly financial updates will be provided to council. Compliance ratios will be communicated as part of the budget information presented to council. At a, at a minimum, this will consist of two years' actual audited data, the current year ratios, and the ratios proposed in the budget for the upcoming year. This concludes the review of the city financial policies. Next, we will briefly review Finance Committee recommendations to other city finance policies. Other recommended policy changes from the Finance Committee include the purchasing policy. Again, one update that is not reflected in the redlined version in your packet. Page three of this policy, under spending limits, item nine, dispersment of funds. There is an addition of the word "and" after City Manager, so the second sentence for that item should read, "Dispersment of funds in excess of $10,000 requires the written approval of the City Manager and/or designee." And all of the recommendations of this policy are minor grammatical updates. The Ethics and Code of Conduct Policy, one addition is recommended to this policy. In paragraph six, it is recommended to add the following language pertaining to gift limitations in order to follow the state code in regard to these items. And that language is to read as, "The gift limitations do not apply to the exclusions in the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3103.1, related to a widely attended event." And lastly, the Grant Administration and Federal Awards Uniform Guidance Policy. The recommended changes to this policy are to update the CFR references on pages four and six of the policy to reflect updates to the Code of Federal Regulations and minor grammatical changes as well. Lastly, I'd just like to note that the city's finance policies also include the budget policy, the credit card policy, the financial reporting policy, the fund balance policy, and the travel policy. And all of these had no recommended changes from the Finance Committee. This concludes the presentation and review of the financial policies. I would like to thank the Finance Committee for their work and efforts in reviewing these and submitting their recommendations. And based upon these recommendations from the Finance Committee, staff recommends that council approve these policies with the changes mentioned. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that detailed review and going into the details on the revisions that you're requesting. So I'm looking for a motion and a second from council.
I move to approve the financial policies revisions as presented.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Councilman Osborne and a second by Councilman Farnum. Council discussion.
Just to say, I think this is great. In my opinion, just some minor changes. And I think it's great that we look at this once a year, and I think it's great that the Finance Committee has already looked at it. So, so yeah, it's a great job. No questions from me.
I appreciate the detail that staff has gone through comparing the current version with the other code to make sure everything's consistent with the change that was made to the capital plan to comply with policies and some of the updates to federal code sections to make sure that everything's exactly as it should be. Some of those changes have gone a ways to prior staff, so they had to be thorough in order to catch all of those things because they weren't here when they were made.
The, the only note that I had was A-Fect versus E-Fect, and you addressed that. So otherwise, everything's great. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? All right. Well, thank you for the presentation. I think that, I think all of the revisions that have been done, I know they've been thought through and the Finance Committee's reviewed. So I think you all have done a great job, and thank you for keeping everything up to date. All right. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes. All right. Next on the list, ordinances, second reading. Second ordinance reading for file number 03-2023 for 1875 Long Crescent Drive. Public comment. No one signed up for public comment. And so staff report, Jay.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nave, members of council. Mr. Mike Felty, who represents Felloc Properties LLC, has made a request for a zoning map amendment for property located at 1875 Long Crescent Drive, Tax Map Parcels 222-2-2 through 15. The property is currently split zoned between R1A, which is single-family residential, and B3, General Business District. The request is to rezone the entire property to B3, General Business District. At the January 9th, 2024 meeting, the City Council voted to approve the request on first ordinance reading. Staff recommends approval on second ordinance reading.
All right. We're looking for a council motion and second for the second reading by full or by caption only.
I move for second reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Councilman Osborne and a second by Councilman Farnum. Council discussion.
No questions here. I think, you know, the Planning Commission has looked at this, and we had the public hearing, and now two readings. And we don't have that many split zone properties in the city anymore. And I think the owners already told us, the applicants already told us that they've done a lot of work out there already as far as just cleaning up debris, trash, and tires. So I think they'll, they'll do some good things with, with their project there.
This will help to straighten up the zoning map. It will potentially improve the usability of the property. It'll improve the resaleability of the property should they decide to do so at a later time. There's lots of benefits to this. I only wish that it were easier for us to clean up some of the other existing zoning, but a lot of that, unless we go through a really detailed process to do so, it requires the owner to make that application and pay associated fees and what have you. So we're making improvements here as the code allows.
We appreciate your, your work on this, Mr. Dietrich. And we, obviously, we appreciate the, the applicants for, you know, their willingness. for, you know, their willingness to make an investment, further investment in the city of Bristol, Virginia. I know that they're business owners currently, so we appreciate their continued additional investment, and I think it's a testament that, you know, we don't have any questions because you do such a good job, you know, Mr. Dietrich, as thorough as you are with all these presentations on them, so we appreciate it.
Yep. Thank you for that, and you're right. We've talked about this, I think, now in three different meetings, so, and I've talked also with the owners of the property, so I'm excited for what their idea is and what they want to do there. I think it'll certainly look good, look better than what we're seeing in that area, so looking forward to them moving forward with their business. So no further discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnum.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Naev.
Yes. Reading of ordinance.
Ordinance number 24-1, An Ordinance by the City Council of Bristol, Virginia Approving the Request to Amend the City Zoning Map from Single Family Residential (R1A) to General Business District (B3) for 1875 Long Crescent Drive, Tax Map Parcels 222-2-2 through 222-2-15.
All right. Thank you, and we're looking for a council motion and second for adoption.
I move for adoption of the ordinance as presented.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Councilman Osborne and a second by Councilman Farnum. Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnum.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Naev.
Yes. All right. Matters to be presented by members of the public, non-agenda items, and we've had three people sign up. First, I will call up Mary Jane Miller. And as you come up, if you would please state your name and address, and then you will have a green light, and then you'll have a yellow light when it's about your time to wrap it up, and then a red light means that your time is over.
My name's Mary Jane Miller. I live at 1036 Garden Lane, which, the way a crow flies, is a few blocks from here. The definition of vandalism, real simply, is deliberate destruction. And about 22 years ago, I had a young man vandalize my property. He was arrested, he was sent to jail, and he was ordered to pay me for what he destroyed, which he did. Now, I've lived in the same house for over 30 years, and on occasion, I will see a deer or a raccoon, or maybe even a groundhog, on my property. But the past five years, there are now herds of deer racing across my property several times a day. Do you know what that does to a beautiful yard, especially when it's wet? Also, there are many, many families of raccoons, and in the past two years, I've paid about $1,200 to Wildlife Removal Services to catch 22 raccoons and eight possums in a small fenced-in garden area on my property. The raccoons also broke two expensive bird baths and yard ornaments, even removing the wire cages that I had put around everything to try to protect them. The deer have destroyed two large lilac trees, three hydrangea bushes, eight azaleas, totaling about $800, and this after I pay about $200 a year for liquid fence, which I spray on them constantly. I've spoken with Larry Bordwine, who is the Bristol Animal Control Officer, and he tells me he has nothing to do with anything wild, only domestic animals. I've talked with Cory Gardner, who's the Department of Virginia Wildlife, and he says it's not up to him, it's up to the city of Bristol, Virginia, to do something. They both agreed with me that there's an overpopulation issue with wild animals, especially deer, which can lead to an ecological disaster. A question: Could you please tell me who owns what is now called Citizen Cemetery? Does anybody know who owns Citizen Cemetery? When I bought my property and had the surveying done, it said North Bristol Baptist Church owned that cemetery. So who's responsible for its care? Does anybody know? Well, I didn't think so. My property, as well as two of my neighbors, backs up to this cemetery, and it's a breeding ground for wild animals, including copperhead snakes. There are huge, huge piles of cemetery debris, and I've put some of it there because whoever owns it and doesn't take care of it, all the dead trees and everything falls on my property. I pay my yardmen, and I go out there myself, and we pile it up in the cemetery along the road because it's their debris, not mine. Right now, there's a huge dead tree on their property hanging over my property. So when it falls and hits my house, I guess I'm responsible. Thank goodness I have insurance. One of my neighbors and I, we try to take care of the back part of the cemetery. We weed eat it, we put flags on the veterans' graves, but it's just becoming uncontrollable. Now, urban archery. It is defined, "The objective of urban archery season is to reduce human-deer conflicts in urban and suburban areas." So I was told by one of these gentlemen I talked with, with wildlife and animal control, that there's only one city ordinance that has to be passed to allow urban archery season. Is this true? I'm seeing heads shaking, yes, but is it true? Can I hear something? So no one knows.
I remember we had this discussion last year. It was on the agenda at some point, but I'm not sure if it's one that's left to pass or where it's at.
Is it true a bow hunting season is already approved by the wildlife organizations of I can answer that. Man, do they have a fabulous website. And do you know that there are 58 Virginia communities the size of this that have urban archery programs, and they're very, very successful? Even Chapel Hill, North Carolina, has an urban archery program because everybody's getting inundated with the deer population. Is it true that the state takes care of the licensing process and all the laws within this program, and all we have to do is pass an ordinance? These are a lot of questions that need to be answered, and sooner than later, because my property is getting destroyed. Is there an ordinance in Bristol, Virginia that says it's illegal to feed deer?
I don't know. I don't think so.
I've been told there is, but I have neighbors who feed the deer, so as far as I'm concerned, they're to blame for all the issues in my property. Oh, I got the red light. May I say one more thing, please?
Yes.
I've had two accidents on Piedmont Avenue with deer. Now, I don't drive fast, and Piedmont Avenue is my main thoroughfare to get home. And where the overpass is, the railroad overpass in front of Bristol Steel, I'm going 20 miles an hour, 10 o'clock at night, and out of the corner of my eye, I see movement, and I look and I see a deer barreling toward me. Well, I grew up in northwestern Pennsylvania where my driver's ed teacher said, "Do anything you can within reason to not hit a deer." So at 20 miles an hour, I turned my car into the concrete wall there, just to avoid hitting a deer. So now my car has been devalued because technically it's been in an accident and it's had to have bodywork, and that was $1,500 at 20 miles an hour and one deer. A second time, I was backing out of a friend's driveway who lives on Piedmont Avenue, and I'm basically at a standstill or maybe going about five miles an hour, and a doe runs in front of me, and the baby comes behind and runs into my car. No damage, but there's a problem, and it needs to be fixed, and it can be fixed without the city spending a lot of money. And if anybody wants to know anything else about urban archery, their website is fantastic. So that's all I have to say, and I hope when I drive home tonight, I don't hit another deer.
Yep. All right. Thank you, and I'll look up on some of the questions you've answered and get back with you. I've got your information here. Next, we have Curtis Shane Epperson.
Good evening, members of the council. I'm Charles Humphrey. I am a pastor in Mendota, Virginia. I'm a husband, father, and foster parent out there. Some members of my church that minister out of the abortion mill here in Bristol, Virginia, recently made me aware that the, of the traffic and the increase of activity out at the abortion mill. It was heartbreaking, and I felt compelled to come and to encourage you once again to reconsider the ordinance that was brought before you in multiple ways last year. They have now, they're open seven days a week. They're open on Sunday. Even a few Sundays ago, there was estimated around 30 abortion appointments out there. I don't know what the daily average is, but if it's somewhere near there, there's between 100 to 200 children being killed a week at the abortion mill here in your city. And I know that there has been inactivity, primarily probably due to fear of lawsuits, and I would encourage you to weigh the two things: a pragmatic fear versus a faithful leadership. We live in a time in this country where it becomes more and more evident that faithful leadership is needed. Our country is founded upon faithful leadership in the face of pragmatic fear, and we can only sustain ourselves through faithful leadership apart from pragmatic fear. And I would encourage you once again to reconsider the ordinance. I think the silence and the inactivity and the move, or the lack of movement due to pragmatic fear, has actually encouraged this kind of increase. Most of the people that are coming here are not from around here. It's a protected haven because other bodies of leadership have made decisions to not allow that kind of thing to happen in their communities, and they're not making decisions off of pragmatic fear. And since there is silence here, it has opened the door, it is increasing, there's more bloodshed because of that. And praying for you all, I hope to be here more often to just be praying for you all and to encourage you all, but I do ask that you would reconsider it once again this year. I do believe that the complacency is encouraging more bloodshed. Thank you for hearing me out.
All right. And we have Curtis Shane Epperson. Yeah. Okay. Okay. Next, we have the consent agenda.
I move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Councilman Osborne and a second by Councilman Farnum. Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnum.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Naev.
Yes. And we stand adjourned.
Farnum.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Farnum.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Naev.
Yes. And we stand adjourned.
Farnum.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Holmes.
Thank you.